And welcome, everybody, to the May 23 meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. The first item on our agenda tonight is the minutes for May 2.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Do you have questions to?
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. I can give you one in a moment. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, and the Town of Amherst, Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed preliminary subdivision application. We're actually, do I have to do these one at a time, Chris?
I think so, because they're timed.
Okay. Alright, so this is subdivision plan 2012-1, 149 and 125 Sunnerson Road, and 92, 96, 116, and 134 Montague Road, and 55 and 113 Coles Road, brought by the applicant WD Coles, Inc., request for approval for five lot preliminary subdivision plan map 5A-29, 5A-139, 5A-110, and 5A-42, and this is in the commercial and neighborhood residential zone of districts. Do any board members have any disclosures about this subdivision plan we've made? If not, we'll hear from the applicant, if they're present.
No, the applicant's not present. I asked them to be present. I wonder if they're present upstairs.
Conservation Commission meeting is current at the same time, so...
Possibly they've...
Let me run upstairs and see if someone is there.
I suppose so.
I think they would have figured it out.
You would think. That that's not the planning board.
But they have to be here. No, they don't have to be here, but David and Jonathan asked them if they would be.
Yeah, we had asked that they appear as a courtesy. We understand that WD Coles, Inc. intends to withdraw these subdivision plans.
Who would be up there?
Probably the others.
What's that?
Who would be up there?
Oh, who would be up there?
Which person?
Sarah Leclerc or Cindy Jones.
I guess we'll take care of some housekeeping. I'll go ahead and read the, well, I'll just read this letter from Cindy Jones, dated May 16, 2012. I think everybody got a copy in their packet. Dear Planning Board members, WD Coles, Inc. would like to respectfully request to withdraw without prejudice the three preliminary subdivision applications that were filed with the Amherst Planning Department on April 13, 2012, describing subdivision plans 2012-1, 2, and 3. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Cindy Jones, President. And she has added a note, "Thank you for all your zoning efforts of late." As we have a public hearing to open, there's not a lot we can do in the meantime.
Come on, upstairs waiting for you. Kidding. What are you kidding? I'll sit back here.
Okay, so we just opened the public hearing, Ms. Jones, about your subdivision applications. Would you like to address the planning board?
Yes, please. I submitted a letter I'd like to withdraw without prejudice, if that's okay with you.
Well, I did read your letter aloud to the board a few minutes ago, and I think there's nothing prohibiting you from withdrawing it. Does anyone from the board have any comments or questions for Ms. Jones?
Are there any more chairs?
Yes, over there. And over there.
I'm sorry, I didn't think anyone was coming tonight since it was in the paper. This is very good.
Alright, do we have any comments or questions from the public with respect to these applications which have been requested to be withdrawn? Hearing none. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second in terms of crowder. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Yes, unanimously. Thank you. I'm not sure that the board has anything to deliberate on this, other than to, like, do we need to, if I may ask, staff, do we need to take a vote to allow the withdrawal of this application? Yes. It will entertain a motion.
I'll so move to withdraw without prejudice.
Sorry.
This is, for the record, this is the first one. These are three different public hearings, so this is correct.
Yes.
So, 2012, oh, one.
We'll need to go through the formalities for each of these. One second. We have a motion by Mr. Rosway, second by his board. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next public hearing, on the second one, is not scheduled until 7:15. We have five minutes to take care of housekeeping matters. We'll go through the non-timed agenda items. I'm going to skip the town meeting briefing, because that's going to take longer than three minutes. We have a signing of decision for SPR 2012, 4-N11288896, North Hampton Road, for Amherst College.
Here's the decision, and everyone has to sign one of these pages if your name is on there, and the other page is only signed by Mr. Webber.
While we're signing, could I ask a question of the staff?
Of course.
Just looking at the agenda, just curious. We have, we always have files anyway, why does old business come before new business? Wouldn't new business come first, and then old business? Just a curiosity.
Often, old business contains things that are coming from past meetings.
Okay.
And that you want to deal with, get them over with first. But, hey, that's the flimsy answer. The real answer is that we've always had it done.
Okay.
You can change it around any way you want.
Well, ask any answer, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, absolutely. We wouldn't want to change anything, no question. Where's my tee shirt with the H in it?
Time for... Ms. Preston.
I can talk about lot releases.
Certainly.
We have had a request for the release of, I believe it's four lots in the Amherst subdivision by Tofino Associates. I think it's actually five lots. And traditionally, when we've gotten to the point of having five, over 50% of the lots being requested to be released, you have asked for a bond, a performance bond, or some money to be put in escrow to finish the roadways and the infrastructure for the subdivision. So, in this case, we received this request, and we asked the town engineer to estimate how much it would cost to finish the infrastructure of this subdivision, and he's now in the process of coming up with that estimate. So, until he has the estimate, we wouldn't be able to ask you or to explain to you what the estimate is all about, or to have you vote on. So, we're expecting that he'll have the estimate prior to your meeting on June 6, and that we'll have that information for you at that time, and then you can decide whether you want to hold money in escrow to finish this subdivision, and whether you would like to release these lots.
So, the idea being that we not release the lots until we have the report from the EVA, correct?
That's the way you have traditionally handled it, yes?
Yes.
I don't really get jobs over here.
No, please do.
Sort of maybe following Ms. Anderson's examples, so why do we always do it, to where we always do it. I can understand traditionally asking for surety bond at 50% of lots. There's still a lot of lots left and of a very high value, and I would at least be open to discussing if holding X number of lots at this point in time would give you enough guarantee to cover the cost of road completion, rather than having it set automatically at 50%, which seems, given that the real estate market in the last 20 years, very high, does carry a certain expense, it's been very slow for those lots to go, but anyway.
Mr. Tucker?
What we do at 50% is find out what the value of the remaining utility work and roadwork is, and then we can make precisely those kinds of determinations that we, 50% is the tradition, because you can have four lot subdivisions, and you can have 50 lot subdivisions. It seems to be, been in the past, a useful breaking point, at which point you say, okay, wait a minute. What do we have left to do, and what's the value?
You don't automatically ask for a bond.
Right.
Thank you very much for that useful discussion. Is there any objection to tabling this until our next DAA? We'll table it until our next DAA. And thank you, Mr. and the staff, for explaining the procedure. We'll proceed on to our second preliminary subdivision plan public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, and the Town of Amherst, Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed preliminary subdivision application. Subdivision 2012-2, Sunnerson Road, WD Coles, Inc., request approval for a three lot preliminary subdivision plan, map 5A-1, zoned commercial, club, prom, conservancy, and neighborhood residential. Do we have any board member disclosures with respect to this subdivision plan? Okay, hearing none, from the applicant.
I request a withdrawal application without prejudice.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have any questions or comments from the public?
No questions.
You? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Do we have any further discussion on the applicant's request to withdraw the subdivision application without prejudice?
I'll move to approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Mr. Rosway, do we have a second?
A second?
It's for you.
Thank you. We have, any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we have seven minutes until our next public hearing. I think that was a record of some kind, I'm not sure if it was. Alright, we will hear a letter that we received from Mr. Stephen Spiegel on May 4, and this is respect to, and I think we'll hear from staff about what this application is exactly. ZBA number 2012-22, GT Amherst LLC. Hello, Planning Board, I received in the mail a notice about housing on Lincoln Avenue, and their appeal to make the house not owner occupied. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the town meeting. My family and I live at 15 McClure Street, and feel that having owner occupied housing in this neighborhood is vital to keep the community feel. Already, the neighborhood has many non-owner occupied housing, and if you show up many nights of the week, you can see that the care for the community is not there. Respectfully, Stephen Spiegel. Ms. Preston.
So, this is really a zoning board of appeals case, and there is a person who wants to purchase this property, and the property had a special permit issued to it a number of years ago, I think back in the late 90s, and one of the conditions was that the house, the owner occupied, if it were allowed to become a two-family house. The new owner, or the prospective new owner, would like to eliminate that as a condition in purchasing the house. He would like to be able to rent out both units, and so he is appealing to the zoning board of appeals to delete that particular condition of the permit. And I am not entirely sure why the planning board got a copy of this letter. It could be that Mr. Spiegel was under misapprehension that you were the ones who were going to make the decision. The zoning board of appeals has also received a copy of this letter, so, you know, if you wanted to make any comments on this subject, I could pass them along to the staff person of the zoning board, and if not, it's really just for your information.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. Any comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. McClure Street, is that, is that somewhere around Lincoln and Sunset?
It is at the very north end of Sunset and Lincoln, runs north-south between the two. It starts at Fearing and goes north up to what used to be North Hadley Road.
Okay.
So, it sort of splits the block.
So, it's very near the UMass Southwest Residence, right on Fearing Street?
Yes. It's a neighborhood in transition, and has been in transition for a long time.
It's actually pretty stable, I remember.
I'm happy to hear more comments from the public, if anyone would like to speak.
Yeah, I would just comment that...
Would you mind identifying yourself?
Paige Wilder, Precinct 10, I live on Fearing Street. This particular owner who's buying the house has eight, if not 10, violations in May for other properties that he owns. Just like that in the record. Police record, I mean.
Thank you. Does the board have any information to comment to the ZBA owners?
I, you know, speaking for myself, I mean, not speaking for the board, but as Chris explained to us, there was an agreement when this house was established as a two-family, and not all that long ago, and my, and having heard, you know, a lot of our meetings, and public meetings, and deliberations, and town meetings, and everything about rental creep, if I could use that word, about how neighborhoods are changing, I just, my feeling would be that, you know, unless there's a compelling reason, a deal's a deal, as far as the owner occupied caveat to that agreement. My opinion on that. I hate to see, you know, an established neighborhood, not that owner occupied makes it bad, but we sort of all think, I think, nowhere that would be going.
Do you want to embody that sentimental emotion of some kind? Mr. Keith?
I agree with the sentiment, but I think this is a ZBA issue, not a planning board issue, and I'm disappointed to have this board participating in that problem.
Ms. Kruger?
I think I, I do agree with Mr. Keith just, but I think we've made a commitment, and we'll probably talk about this more, to talk about some of the larger housing issues, and how they impact land use, and some things of planning, like, so I see this as germane to other conversations we might have about student housing and our housing impact, we just, I don't think we have enough information before this letter to make a recommendation to the ZBA. If we had asked for it to come before us first, then I might feel there's not really about making a comment to those ZBA.
I think I hear a consensus to not make any recommendation to the ZBA owners.
By the way, I agree with Mr. Keith, I'm just venting.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
I also agree with Mr. Keith and Ms. Kruger, that it's an issue that we probably want to discuss, but if we were going to say anything to ZBA about this, we would need more information, and we need to bring it before us, and schedule a site visit, and get some more detail about it, and we don't have any of that detail, and it's not on our agenda. And I have confidence that the ZBA will maintain jurisdiction and take the appropriate action.
Okay, thank you, everyone. It being 7:25, it will begin our third public hearing of the night. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, and the Town of Amherst, Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice has been posted in the town hall and sent to a butters. The hearing is being held to provide the opportunity for interested citizens to be informed about and to comment on this proposed preliminary subdivision application. Subdivision application 2012-3 for 24, 28, 30, 32, and 56 Coles Road, brought by WD Coles, Inc., requesting approval for a four lot preliminary subdivision plan, map 2C-16, 5A-130, 5A-44, 5A-45, 5A-46, and 5A-108, all in the commercial zoning district. Do we have any board member disclosures on this? Hearing none, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
With appreciation for the staff time that was taken for this process, and then your time, I request a draw without prejudice.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do we have any questions or comments from the board as we wrap up this third public hearing? Ms. Kruger?
I'd like to make a short comment, I think, to the benefit of people who may be watching on TV, and just to get a little context to what we're doing. There was a proposed zoning change at a recent town meeting a couple nights ago, that we would have passed, we'd rezone this area, and this subdivision proposal was filed prior to that potential zoning change, and it's very typical for landowners to file a subdivision approval, a permit request, or other zoning requests before a zoning change might happen to protect their property rights under the existing, the old zoning. In Massachusetts, under our State Zoning Act, we give grandfathering protection of up to eight years if a plan is filed prior to the zoning change, and so it's a very rational and typical thing for a property owner to do. These plans were all filed prior to a potential zoning change, the zoning change did not pass at town meeting, therefore, we haven't gone into great detail, but it makes sense, given that there has been no zoning change, the grandfathering protection is not particularly meaningful right now, that we have to come and withdraw, because it's a very lengthy process for us to review and prove, and to continue on while the engineering and detailed work, so I just thought we'd be giving a little context to what's happening, and it's kind of irrational, just turning on the TV right now, what is happening, and it's what happens with land use, and with the State Zoning Act, and we're just going through the steps of that, that there was no zoning change.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger, that's my understanding of the situation as well, and we do appreciate Ms. Jones coming down here tonight, and personally caring to withdraw the applications. Do we have any comments from the public?
Well, I just have a question, because I'm still sort of learning the process.
Could you identify yourself?
If I can take a minute, my name's Valerie Cooley, Precinct 1, I received in a butters notice about this, so that's why I was here. I guess the first question is, I think I remember from the letter that this stuff was available for me to come see at the office, and what was available? This map, or is there like a more detailed application? Because, you know, this doesn't tell me a lot, so, again, just in case, I have to be involved in this stuff in the future, I want to be clear on sort of what information's available ahead of time. And the other question is, I saw that there's this one report that the staff developed on one of these applications, but I don't see one for the others, and is that because you knew it was going to be withdrawn or something, and you didn't want to put the time in?
Ms. Preston, would you be here to address the question?
Yes, so for subdivision plans, we do not usually receive much more than an application form and a plan, and in this case, the plan was large, and we reduced it so we could put it in the mail.
Right.
And we made up these colored drawings to show where this thing is in space, because if you didn't have that, it would be hard to tell. The second question you asked was...
And are these available before the meeting, or only if you come to the meeting?
They are available before the meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought of the notice.
Yeah, we make packets up for the board, certainly by Friday of the week before, but sometimes even earlier than that. The second thing had to do with the development application report that was written for one of these.
Right.
And normally, we would have written a development application report for all three, and I was in the process of doing that when we received the letter, or an indication that a letter would be coming, and so, you know, we felt that it wasn't really worth it to spend time analyzing these.
So, would this also normally be available ahead of this meeting, or does this have to come to get it?
Yes. Yeah, or I could have emailed it to you. I could have emailed any of these things to you.
Oh, okay.
So, just call me and ask me, and I, because I have all of these things scanned.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Just as a point of further context, there are two steps in the subdivision approval process. This is the preliminary subdivision application stage, which is the first, and really only conceptual stage. State law does not even require public hearings for this stage. We have for decades required public hearings, because we want everybody to know what's going on. It is the filing of the preliminary that freezes the zoning. You then have to file a definitive, which is the point at which you get into engineering plans, and much more extensive work, within eight months, in order for that freeze to sustain itself, should there have been a change in the zoning. But because there was not a change in the zoning, the applicant did not need to proceed with the process, and so simply is withdrawn.
Okay, let's, does anyone else have comments or questions about the process? I think this has been very useful as a, as a way to wrap up our... Yes, Ms. Preston?
I just have one more comment, which is that the phrase "without prejudice" means that there's no indication that Ms. Jones couldn't come back and refile these applications again. So, you haven't rendered an opinion on the subdivision plans in any way?
Correct. And everyone on the board is clear about what we're doing? Alright, where were we?
For our, for our, for our...
Okay, so, hearing will further comments from the board, from the public, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board before we come to a vote? I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw her application without prejudice.
I move that we accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
A second. Further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for coming in tonight.
Thanks for dealing with this. I appreciate it.
Good job.
Should have time out of productive things you could be doing tonight. Thanks.
You're welcome. Moving along to our next agenda item. Which is debriefing the 2012 annual town meeting. By way of background, Mr. Crowder, do you want to... Okay. Any objections to that? We have, that's very courteous of you. The next item on our old business is Site Plan Review 2012 4-N1-2888, 96 North Hampton Road, brought by Amherst College. We had heard a site plan review and asked them to come back with a screening and lighting plan in accordance with condition number one of our decision. They have provided us with a screening and lighting plan which appears to my eye, having read it, to comply with what we had talked about on our last meeting. It contains cut sheets of the various fixtures to be used. It appears to have a dark sky shield for the floodlights. And perhaps the applicant would like to just let us know what's happening.
Good memories. There's two units. There's a unit in the back and a unit in the front. These three parking spaces plus the additional garage. So two of these parking spaces are going to walk this way and go up the staircase. The others are going to walk most likely up this way. These are the existing lights on the building. And so this is the solution concept that we're proposing along with 20 feet of ventilated screen on two sides to block the neighbors. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or staff? Mr. Tucker?
I'm just curious. How many planks are we talking about in distance apart, that sort of thing?
I haven't established that. It would be a 20-foot delineation of hemlock and I would look to a landscaping contractor to advise on the long term.
The point of the exercise would be for it to be fairly quickly functioning as a screen at the proximity of the plants.
In the past, we've spoken about making reference to the Town of Amherst landscape guidelines when we're about doing types of plantings. So the hemlocks would need to be in compliance with those rules, correct, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Brestrop?
Do we understand that these are to be hemlocks?
That's what we were closing and we discussed at the last meeting.
As I understand, this is somewhat of a shaded site, a hemlock, essentially doing all of that. Ms. Kruger?
Two personal comments. I know you're replacing the flood with the floodlight we had the air sheet for. And maybe it's me that I have trouble finding reference to this replacement flood being dark sky compliant. In the back of the copy, we have it. It talks about the guard. And I didn't know if the guard was what made it dark sky compliant and if we were getting the guard.
Yeah, we're going to put the guards on. It's a shield.
Then I would just suggest when we kind of get fit about this, make it clear that this light with the shield, because I wasn't sure. And then just in your, this is a comment on your letter. You say, "We understand that beyond the general requirements of site plan review, the last, your last, next last letter, would exempt this residential three-car parking area from lighting and screening requirements, which makes it sound again like we don't have the authority under our site plan review to require the lighting and the screening." We can reply to all of this. Still confusion about this?
No, not confused.
Okay.
You have the authority, but if we're not being converted to a duplex.
Oh, okay. The point is we're not being put to the proposed, we say, compliant or we're not needed since you are.
The number of parking spaces itself does not require the screening or the lighting review. It's the change of use from one thing to two things.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for future reference too, we do like to see something that says dark sky compliant on the cut sheets. And nothing anywhere in here says that, so. To me, it appears that with these, you have four floods using these modern LED floods, which is great. And each of those four super stealth fixtures. For each bulb will have a shield on it, right?
And I'll offer, it wasn't the easiest thing to find a shield, so. And if you notice the photograph of the LED bulb, it is anything hot, dark sky compliant. So that's the bulb going on the fixture.
And the shield is opposite that on the cut sheet. It's on the back of the previous page.
That's an option.
It appears to me that this, I mean, even though it's not, that there's nothing on here that says dark sky compliant to my eye, which is admittedly not scientific one, that it would shield all light that would go out above horizontal, which would make it, as I understand, a dark sky compliant.
Yeah, I think there's a dimension on that. That shield is pretty substantial.
It is. Comments from anyone else on the lighting? It does appear to be a big improvement over what was proposed before. Any questions or comments on the screening? Hearing none. I don't even know if we need to vote on this. I guess we do. I'll entertain a motion to approve the screening and lighting plan submitted with respect to this application.
I will move that we accept the screening light that's submitted for 96 North Hampton Road behalf of the applicant from Amherst College. Mr. Hartman?
Thank you, Ms. Kruger.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Can we just have a whoop?
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay. We've moved through all the other agenda ones here except for... That's okay. Did you want to bring something to the attention of the board, Mr. Rosner?
Ms. Kruger has a nice little pamphlet that she's passing around to people regarding publications available for those fellow planners.
This is entitled "Good Thinking, Great Ideas for Great Communities" by the APA Planning Books, American Planning Association, at, well, apaplanningbooks.com. Thank you. Pass that around.
And then when you're done, just pass it.
Ms. Kruger? I had brought, the other night, we were at a town meeting, had brought Mr. Rosner's book on Planning Magazine, because it was, it's not transportation, I bought it for Ms. Anderson and Mr. Rosner. He got, he was interested in some of the resources and I don't know if the department's yet gets Planning Magazine or something. So that might be something to start offering commanders to borrow from the department. So, because he seems so interested, I brought the publications to you.
We have, in our library, we have actually a range of different kinds of publications, particularly the Planning Advisory Service publications of the APA, which tend to focus on, like, a new reader-sized magazine things that focus on specific planning issues one at a time. And we have probably 100 of those, including some quite recent things talking about urban agriculture. Everything you would think of is in there.
Apologies for, thank you.
It's no trouble. I mean, it's part of what we do. And I think, you know, the more we educate ourselves, the better position we're in to educate the public, so. Thank you.
Just wasn't quite sure.
Sorry. Next time I catch you passing notes, you have to hand them to the class. Okay. Debriefing the 2012 annual town meeting. For those watching at home, as well as for those here in the room, the planning board presented three articles to town meeting this fall. We had Atkins Corner rezoning article, the North Amherst Village Center rezoning article, and we had a parking article, which we had at the next town meeting. The first two being Atkins Corners and the North Amherst Village Center were heard on successive nights and each took a full night of discussion before town meeting. The votes to, with respect to those articles, were very close to the two-thirds majority needed to pass. In the case of the second one, we lost by three votes. However, they did not pass, meaning that the existing zoning at Atkins Corners and North Amherst Village Center will remain in place and that the form-based code overlay that we had proposed is not in effect. However, we did have a success with Ms. Anderson presenting the parking article, which, as I understand it, passed with great support. As someone pointed out, I think it was Mr. O'Keefe, in Major League Baseball, a 333 batting average is MVP material, so we should consider ourselves proud of our accomplishment.
And you're almost like a good player. I wasn't expecting it to be heard. It was a Monday night. It was a Wednesday night. What was it? Whatever it was.
It was Wednesday.
It was Wednesday night and I was home and I got an email from Jonathan saying, "The articles are moving." And I was, "Uh-oh." And I already had my speech prepared if I was stopped speeding through town about why I was in such a hurry to get to the junior high. Because I made it from South Amherst to the junior high in probably six minutes, so.
Well, thank you for doing that, Ms. Anderson. We certainly appreciate it.
It was an adventure.
Mr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the whole board's participation in all three of the articles. I've been doing this a long time as a member of the zoning subcommittee and it really was a different process this time around. It felt different to me as a subcommittee member because historically, we've really carried all the weight as subcommittee members of preparing, presenting, convincing people about these articles. And it really felt different to have the board participate and have a sense of ownership of the articles. That's how it's supposed to work. These articles belong to us as a board. And so it's a really big thank you to everybody for helping in the discussions leading up to the articles and in the presentations at town meeting. Those have been tremendously useful and it got us closer than we've been before in the past than at the Major Village Center rezoning efforts. I expect everybody.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. And a special thanks goes out to the zoning subcommittee who spent more time on us than anyone, except perhaps Mr. Tucker. The three members of the zoning subcommittee really put their all into that and met nearly every week for quite some time, meeting with the public and working, deliberating among themselves about how to fix the various concerns that people had about these from Fall Town Meeting. I personally feel that what we brought to Spring Town Meeting was a great, that what we presented to Fall Town Meeting was good, what we presented to Spring Town Meeting was great. And where we go from here is going to be sort of, I guess, a big part of the discussion we have right now. Essentially, we need to make a decision about where to go with these two articles. Mr. Tucker?
You may do whatever you wish procedurally. What we have done in the last few years is following each town meeting, the zoning subcommittee holds a public zoning forum and obtains input from the public about what the priorities are going forward, new zoning issues that have not yet been identified and so forth. The subcommittee then deliberates and reports back to the planning board and the planning board then decides. So that's been the process to date. If you want to abbreviate that, you can, or do with it what you will. That's just the way we have done this in the last three or four years.
Well, first, I guess, just thank you, Mr. Tucker. Let's hear from different people. Ms. Kruger?
I think this is too big and not appropriate for that particular process right now. We did take ownership of these major zoning issues as a whole and if we can figure out, you know, what we want to do. And of course, then maybe going back and collecting our information through the public hearing. But I mean, I don't want to, you know, the zoning subcommittee folks letting in, but I just... I have some comments, but before that, I just, I don't want to go through that process solely in addition to...
Mr. Rosner?
Before, I very much like to hear the comments that you're preparing this for. But first, I wanted to agree with that approach, that it's probably appropriate for the board to take ownership of it all. In particular, the zoning forums, my experience in the few years I've been here, seem, I don't want to prejudge an upcoming one, and I would hope that an upcoming one might not be this way, but the ones that I have seen seem to be retrospective, with people coming to the zoning forum and commenting on why they're so angry about what did happen and why they want to make an argument for their own particular point of view as to what came up at the last county. I understand that it's not the function of the zoning forum, but that's how it has worked out, in my view. And so then the zoning subcommittee is left with trying to integrate those comments into their agenda and what their priorities are in the zoning subcommittee for an order of topics that you're going to deal with. So it's further, it's a further argument, as I see it, for not necessarily following the procedure that has come in the past. And I'd really very much like to hear your perspective, further comments, Ms. Kruger. But I don't have...
Certainly. I agree with you, Mr. Rosner. Mr. O'Keefe, do you have something to comment on?
I do, agreeing with basically everything that's been said. I do think the zoning forum is an important part of the process, but it's not the only part of the process. And I think what this board has to say is important to me as a subcommittee member. As chair of the subcommittee, I deliberately refrain from having the subcommittee meet in advance of this meeting tonight because I want the board to be driving the process and not the subcommittee to be driving the process. And so the process that Mr. Tucker described of the subcommittee sort of forming its priorities and presenting them to the board for approval has been, in the past, only nominally the case. In most cases, the subcommittee that moves ahead without substantial input for the board. But for the reasons that I already described, with the board being much more heavily involved this time around, I do think that it's important for you all to give us your perspective rather than having the subcommittee sort of pushing upward to the board on what its thoughts and priorities are.
Ms. Ford?
How is the zoning forum moderated? You, you're the ones moderating it.
Yes. It's essentially an open forum, that's what we call it, that we do twice a year after each town meeting. And the stated purpose of it is for people to come... And the stated purpose of it is for people to come and tell us what their priorities are relative to zoning. We have a long worklist of projects that are always on the table for potential advancement. People sometimes have ideas that aren't on that worklist. People can tell us what they think is important and what's not important. That's the intended structure. The actual outcome is, as Mr. Rosman described very often, a referendum to some degree on either what was recently done or what we are considering doing in the future. That's certainly been the case the last couple of times that we've done it.
Can you stop somebody from going, I mean, you know, that's what I'm saying. How is it moderated? Is it somewhat like town meeting where there's a point of order if they're not expressing priorities? I'm just wondering if there's a way of...
So my approach to how I run the meetings is, you know, as you get into a board and then into a subcommittee of the board, the formality level sort of gets lower and lower. So we don't have clocks and gabbles and generally people shouting at each other.
But it might be worth, you know, setting this up in advance with a little bit more structure so that people, you know, if we are going to do it and people point to it, might.
Yep.
Be forewarned of it.
So pointing. My approach historically has been to give people pretty free rein to express whatever ideas are on their minds. But sometimes it does become necessary to focus the discussion a little bit.
All right. And I think that's, I think those are good comments. And anybody who hasn't seen the zoning forum in the past should certainly do so. Mr. Carter, did you hear?
This is a slightly different topic. Last fall, we presented the zoning, those same articles. We met as a board right before the meeting and discussed potential amendments or arguments and with a view towards taking possession of some of the amendments that might be made. We didn't do that this time. And I think that if we had, we might have been able to react, particularly in Atkins Corners, better than we did. So I would like to suggest that we do that next time. We plan to meet before the night of our article coming up. So that, especially if we know that there are going to be amendments made. So we can make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Okay, well, I think we're extraordinarily lucky that we're sitting around a table tonight for this discussion. So let's take advantage of it and hear from Ms. Kruger.
I made some notes this morning. I had my kitchen cabinet cabinet partner, my daughter, help me think this through because I have been thinking a lot about doing zoning articles. I'd like to talk about them separately first, and they do interrelate. I think some of the things are more global. I, and I really want to hear everyone's opinion because I often change my mind after hearing the folk, you know, other people on the board and how they're thinking. But right now, my inclination is to do some more work on both of these and not try to rush through for Fall Town Meeting. Fall Town Meeting seems very soon to me because it's already, especially June, and the summer has a different pace. Maybe be putting something together and having committee discussions in front to get something ready. So again, I really want to hear what people think. In thinking about Atkins Corners, it would have been helpful for me to move up the amendments. That's not our fault, and being able to react as a group of the amendments kind of swung the discussion away from the article for other reasons. One of the reasons I'd play, I mean, I agree with this, but I think it makes sense to finish the road and have it up and operating because I think that's an obstacle we cannot overcome by just talking about it. I didn't find that we had enough supportive information about how the road will function and how the pedestrian safety issues are going to work. I thought we would have more conceptual material about that. And while I am a bit confident about that getting resolved down the road, I don't think we could have enough to make a strong enough argument in that that is going to continue to come up and make the roads very, very, very operational. So, and just one thing on Applewood. And I was speaking to some of these points, and I had some preparation about the Applewood situation, but I think it was only afterwards that I really got what had happened. And it's good to both Jonathan and Mr. Tucker and Mr. Tucker to be probably filming that for it. I thought the deading away of the five acres or six acres for the arboretum is sort of penalizing them in their expansion plan, potential as to, in the way it is. But what I found out, part of the history was that a number of Applewood residents had pooled money to buy that specifically to keep the project from getting any bigger. So for me, that was a little bit different information because it's a little bit like what we were talking about earlier. If something is permitted or set up one way, when you change it, it gets kind of sticky. So if I were one of the people who contributed to buying that specifically so that it couldn't be an increase in the number of units, I might have a difficulty with a kind of, now we're just sweeping it into a whole origin of zoning. So I'd like to come back as we approach Atkins again and talk through more about Applewood and whether it belongs in the zoning proposal right now or not. Because we have other properties that have a sort of not conformity issue. So I don't feel like I really understood the Applewood issue well enough. So it's something else I think we can work on in the interim here. It doesn't mean I don't potentially self-support any of the units or not, but I think there's a little bit more, there's a little bit more there. And so that's kind of what I noticed about Atkins, the Atkins Corners. I was a little surprised. I thought it would pass. So kind of understand more. Well, it didn't. I think our outreach, going to Applewood, meeting with people, like, part of that, to just invite residents of Applewood to come to him for college for reading. This isn't faulting anyone. I think we have to remain the story to people, especially seniors who aren't resident of the city. So I'd like to just stand on Atkins a little bit.
That's going to be fine. Ms. Brestrop?
I understand everything you've said. And I just wanted to share some thoughts. And one of them is that staff is not necessarily at liberty to talk in specifics about ideas, concepts that landowners have prior to their submitting an application. Often, we have landowners who come in and say, "You know, we've been thinking about doing this. What do you think? Would this be allowed by zoning bylaws, and how would we get this promoted?" They're just in the beginning stages of thinking about something like that. So to some degree, Applewood was in that position, and we were respectful of their need for, you know, not having this hit with a newspaper that Applewood was going to expand. They talked to us about various ideas that they had. And they haven't presented anything, you know, in an application form. What they have told us, though, is that what they might do is all consolidated right around the building that exists right now. It doesn't have anything to do with the outlined land. So I think that was possibly a misperception on the part of some of the residents, that they didn't understand that the nature and extent of the development would have been very small and would have been attached to the building. So those are two things I wanted to say about that. The, I think that the reason that the Applewood residents purchased the, gave the money to have that land donated to the town was that they wanted a big chunk of open space. And that big chunk of open space will remain no matter what happens to the building. And open space is not only because it's conservation law. So it's invalid. You have to go to the state legislature to get that changed. So I think people, Applewood residents, may not have really understood that. And we need to certainly do a better job about figuring out exactly, you know, what the development potential is there under various zoning scenarios, under this existing zoning scenario, which is basically, you know, not much, if anything, and under a proposed zoning scenario. I think, you know, that is probably a question that we should answer in a much more numerical fashion. And that would go a long way to elate people's fears. I also think that Applewood is a, I have a soft spot in my heart for Applewood, but Applewood is a nonprofit organization. They're not out to make money. What they're trying to do is make themselves comfortable for the people who live there. So I think what they're trying to do is add to their common areas. And I think Carol Katz expressed this at town meeting. They're trying to add to their common areas to make life more enjoyable for the people who live there. And in order to have enough money to add to the common areas, the common areas being they'd like to add a pool, they'd like to add a bigger dining room, whatever, whatever those things might be. So in order to pay for those, they have to have additional units because otherwise they're not going to have any money. So that's kind of where they're coming from. They're not talking about some huge expansion. I think that was not clear to some of the people who were nervous about what was being talked about there. So that's all to say that.
Thank you. Mr. Rosman?
I have comments in three areas, but I don't know, you want to sort of focus on Applewood first?
No, I just, I didn't want to just say all my comments.
Well, mine are more general. And probably more focused on North Amherst. But the first area, I'd actually like to come back to it because it would involve some feedback from some of the residents who I think, some of whom are here tonight. And I'd be interested in getting some feedback there. But I don't know if it's a good thing or not, but somehow I'm on the email listserv for town meeting. And it appears to me that we have become the nasties here. And there's a great us against them. And not everybody, I mean, granted, we've got a large majority on both of these votes, but not, so it's not everybody. But enough of a sizable minority of the town at the town meeting see us as the enemy. And I don't know how we've got to be that. I mean, we're all just citizen volunteers. We're all trying to do what's in the best interests of the town. But I think we need to address it. Somehow, there's a lack of confidence in our decision-making process, perhaps, or how decisions come to us from the planning staff or something. And this is what I would like some feedback on from some of the citizens, layperson who are not members. Second general area that I have, idea that I have is, I'm almost at the point, perhaps because of the vituperative nature of some of the negative comments that have come forward, I'm almost at the point of wanting to even suggest or move that the zoning subcommittee not come forward with any new proposals unless they come from the citizens. Having the planning department say, "Gee, we think form-based code zoning in North Amherst is a great idea, and here's how we're going to do it." And having it go through a zoning subcommittee in terms of working it out and massaging it and coming up with what makes sense to all of us because of our experience and makes sense to the planning department because of their general charge to work for the best interest of developing planning, and in its best sense, planning generally referring to the future. And that's how it's been happening. It doesn't seem to be working. And so it almost seems like, I'm almost at the point of saying, I don't even want to hear about a proposal from zoning subcommittee saying, "Well, we ought to change the zoning in this area of town because we've been looking at it and we think it would be in the best interests of the town." Every major zoning proposal since I've been on the board now, starting with the University Drive and the combined issues last year, and now the individual issues and the gateway issues, have all just been shot down because of this negative attitude. And I don't know if it's because of a lack of confidence in us, a lack of a belief that we're really trying to do the best thing possible. But all of these things have come from ideas generated by the planning department through the zoning subcommittee, and then to us. And by the time it gets to us, gee, it makes great sense to us. But it doesn't make enough sense to enough people in town. So I'm almost at the point of saying, now unless it comes from a citizen petition, we shouldn't even be considering zoning changes in town. The third big issue, and it's somewhat related, I think, to the first also, is somehow we have gotten identified as in hand in glove with WD Kohl's Incorporated. When I am with friends around town and they know that I'm on planning board, one of their questions to me is, "Oh, you guys are working with Kohl's to approve their projects, aren't you?" And once again, it's not a large majority, probably, of the town who believe this, but enough of a sizable majority believe that we are the spokespersons for WD Kohl's and don't understand the process and see the entire North Amherst proposal as a WD Kohl's zone change that they want specifically for the major portion of what the whole North Amherst proposal is about. We know that that's not what it was about. We know that it was greater than that. And ironically, if we're going to be changing this and taking it back at town meeting in the future, it's going to get scaled down even smaller so that ironically, it's going to almost become a WD Kohl's proposal for their particular person. And somehow, we need to get the word out there that everybody in this town, every commercial entity or developer or private property landowner has a responsibility to come to the planning department and come to the planning board for approval if it's within our jurisdiction for site plan review or the limited types of special permit that we can be due. And we are not tied in with anybody. But somehow, that hasn't been the case, at least in my perception. But if it's okay with the chair, I would very much like to hear from some of the citizens who are here tonight about how is it we have become the enemy?
I will open it up to public comment on that issue.
Ms. Keller, I especially like to hear from you, please.
Sure. First of all, I am...
If you could identify yourself in a second. You don't have to get up, but just tell us who you are.
I am now and have been for quite a while, Janet Keller. Most recently, precinct one on Twenty Fourth and Delro. So the very first thing I want to be of great pains to say is that I do not welcome this differently. I have the greatest respect for the work of the board. And I've been working like crazy on this myself, so I have some sense of how very hard you all have worked on it. And I have always assumed goodwill and that you have the best interests of the citizens of Amherst at heart. So please, let's get that out of the way. Now, was I disappointed? Yes. And I think that we've all said it in one way or another, which is that if you've got a big job to do and you try to do it with a pair of pliers, a screwdriver, and a hammer, you're never going to get that house built. You need some more tools and materials than that. And so I think that held this project, I honestly and truly think that held this project back. As you know, in March of 2011, the neighbors came forth with a little paper that they did and said, "We would like a bunch of things." And some of them weren't zoning. And they were terribly, terribly important to us. We wanted the civic core redeveloped. And we wanted new usage found for the North Church, et cetera, et cetera. We wanted shared parking. We wanted some of the traffic circulation things that Mr. Rosman has been advocating for. And we were certainly open to some rezoning as part of that package. And we wanted it to be of a scale and sited where it was appropriate for our neighborhood. And we laid all that out. It was reflected in the charrette. And then I hear how much you liked the fall rezoning. But I have to say, you, the experience for us was, we had a consensus coming out of the charrette. More than a hundred people came to it. Perhaps we were, should have known differently that the only topic was zoning. Perhaps we were, should have known differently that the only topic was zoning, but we really wanted to see those other things, and it was terribly important to us. And to me, as a preservationist who watched and got my heart broken many a day when precious resources get messed up or knocked down, we really wanted the historic zoning first. I know that was a reach. We just got it the other day for Dickinson area, but it's just terribly, terribly important to us to have that reassurance that those buildings that give that area the character of that. That character does have places that are degraded, but it's the other things that we need to build on to give it that character that's so important. As you know, I was also very concerned and continue to be concerned about development in wetlands, and I was very, want to recognize that, the zoning subcommittee recognized that in the case of the area west of Sunderland Road and pulled the intent rezoning out of that area. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's my hope that we can do a combination project that puts more features in here that are terribly important to the neighborhood and to protect the character of the neighborhood. And, let me see if there's anything else. The data, the data is terribly important, particularly the flood maps. We look at that area, and, you know, if the learning curve has been steep for all of us, I've had a lot of experience, as you know, professional experience with environmental planning, but I have only lived here about two, two and a half years. So it's taken me a while to figure out, wow, a river runs through it, a river runs around it, another stream comes around, floodplains all the way through it and around it, and mid-yield aquifer underneath. That's a hydrologic system, and it needs to be taken into account as the 1999 floods on Meadow Street tell us. So that data on the floodplains and the housing scenarios, the kind of thing that Connie talked about, are terribly important to us. We need to be reassured by having that there. I know it's a huge amount of work for you all, but it would go a long way toward helping. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other citizen comments? Yes?
I just, my name's Valerie Cooley. I'm an immediate abutter to the North Amherst property. I actually worked with another town meeting member to put forward the amendments to Article 25 at the risk of the wrath of some of my neighbors, which thankfully had happened. They were not totally happy with me, but I guess, what I heard you ask is about process and why are we distrustful of the process? So, rather than speak to some of the particular concerns, I want to try to speak to that. And I'm going to speak for me, because the one thing I will say is, I don't, we don't represent a monolithic group, frankly. Janet was using "we," and I think she has a lot of great points. I don't agree with her on every single one. Frankly, that's been part of our challenge as a neighborhood, maybe. But my frustration is that I got involved with this three years ago, and three years ago, I was arguing the same things that I argued in those amendments that had not been heard for three years. They, you know, we said, protect Montague Road. Other people, you know, interpreted that as, well, as long as it's residential, that's fine, so we'll make it more residential, you know, we'll keep it RVC, that's the big compromise. And I never felt heard, especially early on in the process. Now, I want to thank Mr. O'Keefe. Most of my interactions after the first year or so were with him, and I found him very respectful. I found him that he did engage. Even Mr. Crowner, I was at at least a couple of meetings where I heard him repeat back some things that he had heard from residents. But my concern is that I feel like in the way the process is structured, is there's already a clear idea, and I don't, you know, I don't think you're sort of bed partners with W.D. Coles. In the North Amherst case, I think what the town wanted happened to mesh with what they were excited about as well. But when I got involved in this process, there was already a pretty clear vision that in my opinion was way too large for a brand-new idea that none of Amherst had ever tested before. But you were going to completely change my entire neighborhood, and nobody bothered to ask me. And the response is always, well, it's a very public process. We've had 18 meetings. Well, when I get to talk for two minutes at a public meeting, that, I don't always feel heard. That's different. And often, early on especially, and from some people, and I will say again, not from Mr. O'Keefe, who most of my interactions have been with, I didn't feel heard. I felt like, well, we know best. It was very top, it felt very top-down. I don't know a better way to describe it than that. I wish that I could, you know, there are meetings early on that we were not invited to, that we went to anyway. You know, when the Cecil Group came, one of the very early questions I kept asking, they laid out this whole process for public comment, and they focused on the public charrette, which I knew would be a very large meeting with like a hundred people. But there was this other step of interviews with key stakeholders, and I kept asking, well, who are the key stakeholders? Who gets to decide who gets these interviews with the Cecil Group? Because I thought as an immediate abutter, myself and some of the other residential owners should be invited to a meeting like that. Now, I think Janet initiated one that happened. It was larger. It wasn't just immediate abutters, you know, and so again, I had five minutes to talk. So I don't know if that begins to get at what you're asking, but that has been part of my frustration with the process. And I feel like the amendment that we got to toward the end, which is almost past, we could have been working from that point two years earlier. I mean, Cindy Johns is one of the main developers, was pretty open to those kinds of compromises. And it was more from the town that I didn't hear as much compromise. And I still don't even understand why that is. And I understand there were compromises. I saw it go from site plan review to special permit. And in an email that I sent to Jonathan O'Keefe, I said, but it felt like, you know, here was town's position, here was the residents' position, the initial point, the initial plan was here. And so when we moved like this, chipping away a couple of things, you know, it didn't feel like compromise for us. And if we had started with an initial plan that was a little bit closer, maybe it could have been more productive and things like those amendments could have happened earlier. Anyway, sorry, I'm rambling.
Well, that's why you're asking me to comment. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
And I will, this is just a comment. I had fully planned on voting for the Amherst, for the Atkins Corner. And actually, I, see, I appreciate you were listening. I really appreciated your comments, because the reason I didn't was I could not believe that residents from Applewood had not been approached. Again, I know they were invited to meetings, like we all are, but that's different. They're a key, key stakeholder. And a meeting at Applewood, right? That, like, to me, of course, that should have been a part of the public process. Of course, it should have been. So that's another example of the kind of thing in the process that concerns me.
Thank you.
Can I comment? Certainly, Mr. Rosen. I see a discrepancy here between the democratic process and the constitutional issues of property rights and the responsibility of the planning board in terms of developing zoning changes, which I'm not sure can ever get reconciled. But in its most harsh manifestation, perhaps one way to describe this is, and this is a harsh, I'm not advocating this situation, but this is a harsh way of presenting it to the citizens of the North Amherst area. It may be that the planning board or whoever is going to make the changes to the town meeting just disagrees with your particular perspective on it, disagrees with what came out of the charrette, for example. Maybe the ideas that came out of the charrette were good ideas, but the democratic process might not be in the best interests of the entire town of Amherst. Take a hypothetical, for example. Say, somebody wanted a zoning change to put a cement plant in the intersection of College Street and Southeast, and so they need a zoning change. But somehow, that's in the best interests of the town of Amherst, and so, say, the planning board recommends a zone change, and town meeting says, oh yeah, we really need a cement plant there. Obviously, many of the people in the area are not going to want a cement plant there. And, I mean, this is sort of a silly hypothetical, because town meeting would never approve it, that's democratic process. But if enough interest was there on part of the town, the town meeting could say, yes, it's in the best interests of the entire town of Amherst, then those people who don't want it because of the democratic process, they're just going to get voted down. In this particular case, I think, in the beginning of, before these compromises started happening that you were just talking about, Ms. Cooley, I believe it was probably the zoning subcommittee and planning board's approach that, yeah, well, it's really in the best interests of the entire North Amherst area and, to that extent, the town of Amherst, for us to try and probably make all of these major changes. And perhaps we can convince the residents that it is also in their best interests as North Amherst residents and also the town of Amherst residents, that that would be the case. But I think we do ourselves, speaking to the planning board now, we do ourselves a disfavor by not just coming forward and saying a couple of things that we might have said at town meeting, which is, we heard that idea, but frankly, we just disagreed with it. And here's why we disagreed with it. Here's why we don't think that position is in the best interests of the town of Amherst, and why we think our position is in the best interests of the entire town of Amherst. And we respectfully heard you. You say that we didn't hear you. You, you know, you North Amherst residents, we heard a lot that, oh, the planning board is not listening to us, we're not being heard. Well, you were being heard, but you were being disagreed with. And not generally for all of it. I kind of agree with much of what you just said, Ms. Cooley, about the compromises that were necessary. But on some issues, we probably would have been better served to have said, it's not true that we didn't hear them. We did hear them, we just disagreed with them. We respectfully disagreed with them. We respected their opinion, and we understand where they're coming from, but we don't think that's in the best interests of the town of Amherst. Another thing along those lines, probably came out somewhere in some comment following it, which was, we tried to gloss over the impacts the zoning changes would have on student housing for students. And we probably should have said, we recognize there are going to be some students in these housing, in these zoning changes, in housing that's built under these zoning changes, but you know what? With these zoning changes, it's going to be better than it would be now. And instead, we tried to say, well, you know, we're really trying to minimize the impact on these, on student housing with these zoning changes. I think we might have been better served just come forward and be more upfront and say, yeah, there is going to be more student housing, but it's going to be better student housing. So, I still, you're more citizen-based, it's just nice.
I'm a little bit worried we're going to do a back and forth.
Yeah, sure.
I definitely want to hear, if anyone wants to hear, but I also, we also don't get a chance to talk to each other legally. In reality, and it's very important for me to, to gather the members in reaction to your answer, including you as well, I mean, just a little word.
Sure, yeah, right, yeah.
And then if I can just step in for a second.
Oh, wow, you just can.
I also really appreciate the public coming in, and we do value your input, and, but Ms. Gruber is right, we do want to take time to talk to each other. We really can't talk to each other outside of this meeting.
I haven't, I don't say anything, so I'm a citizen.
Okay, so we'll get to everybody, but we're going to try and avoid the back and forth.
Sure, sure. I just had some ideas as-
I think this has been very, very helpful, and it's a great starting point to kind of just, you know, talking points and stuff like that. Mr. O'Keefe, you had your hand up.
Yeah, some of it was in response to the discussion that has taken place so far, and I recognize your point, so I won't try to go too far down that road. I wanted to specifically react to the sort of cement plant analogy, because I don't think that that's a great way of describing the situation here. What we're dealing with, what we thought we were dealing with, was something fundamentally different in the sense that we all were working on a project that we thought was going to make the place better. And I think that for all the disagreements in the room, that everybody shares that goal of wanting a better North Amherst, wanting a better Atkins Corner, and there's certainly disagreement about what the right way to do that is, but it's fundamentally different from the idea of, here's something that is acknowledged and known to be objectionable, but is serving the greater good, and so somebody's got to take one for the team and have this thing that they don't want there. That, that's, in my point of view, that's not the way that this was approached, and that's not what we were trying to do as we were working, because we were trying to create better village centers in North Amherst and South Amherst. So, I don't want that to like sort of gel into anyone's mindset about the way that this went down. And the other thing I wanted to speak to specifically, because it is a process-related thing, is the charrette, because it gets mentioned all the time. And then Ms. Cooley and Ms. Keller both brought it up as well. And I also want to say, I really tremendously appreciate the respectful tone of engagement that I've had with both Ms. Keller and Ms. Cooley, going back years in this process. They have been throughout, very easy to work with and very constructive in their feedback about everything that we've been doing. So, I'm tremendously appreciative of that. But there's a lot that has been said about the charrette. This is another thing that sort of becomes a commonly held wisdom that I think is not representing the way that that process actually happens. We've heard, repeated so many times, that the charrette was a charade, and that's not a tone of respectful engagement, in my opinion. But this idea that we had the charrette and we had a great deal of community feedback gathered, which then, we as the zoning subcommittee, or the planning department, or the Cecil Group, or somebody, went and turned around and turned it into something that was entirely different, that is not even close to how I saw that process happening. And I stood up in front of town meeting last fall when this topic was really boiling over for the first time, and I put two maps on the overhead projector. One of the maps was the map that the Cecil Group prepared as part of that charrette, and the other map was the actual zoning proposal. And I spoke to how very similar they actually were. They weren't drawn the same way, the colors weren't the same as their map on both maps, but they captured what the Cecil Group synthesized as part of that charrette process as accommodating the wide variety of viewpoints that people expressed during that charrette. So I thought, and I think that we all thought, at least on the zoning subcommittee, that what we came to town meeting last fall was something that very much represented, as well as we could, the broad diversity of opinion that was presented in the charrette. It did not at all turn this around on its head. And so, so every time I hear that the charrette was a charade, and that we've ignored the will of the people that was expressed in the charrette, I die a little bit inside, because I've been participating in this a long time, and I was at the charrette, and I saw what happened at the charrette, and I saw the output of the charrette, and I saw and I understood the final zoning. And I feel in my heart that we did a very fair and responsible job of listening to everyone who was there and trying as best we could. So that's, I guess, me venting a little bit about the process, but it's worth thinking about going forward in terms of how we construct a process that does reflect as much consensus as we can and make people understand that it does reflect a wider interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. And Mr. Schreiber?
Yes, I think the part of this, one part of this process that happened to me was the petition, I'm sorry, the petition that, the one that I got said, you know, save our neighborhoods. So, I was ready to sign it until I realized that it was an article against, I'm sorry, it was a petition against the two articles, because, you know- it was a petition against the two articles, because, you know, very much the intent of those two articles was to do exactly that, the night thing, to save our neighborhoods. So, clearly, that message, you know, obviously, from the public meetings, it was clear that there was opposition, but the fact that this was specifically, you know, indicating that the articles 24 and 25 were meant to not save the neighborhoods was just completely baffling to me. And, you know, so, you know, obviously, the completely messages as to what to save our neighborhoods means. But one thing we didn't do is what the full build-out under current zoning would look like. And if we were by, the current by light zoning would not be saving the neighborhood. So, you know, really, the concerns about the wetlands, and, you know, the floodplains and so forth, you know, all of that aside, but what can, what is allowed actually there now is not the pristine, you know, there's a picture of a church there, and that's not the neighborhood that would be, that would be saved. And so, I understand that all this, well, you know, politics, and this is a political issue, but that particular petition, I think, really bothered me.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Ms. Ford.
So, I wanted to speak to what Connie was kind of talking about, South Emers and Atkins Corner versus North Emers, about not being either of them to town meeting in the fall. And I got a very different feeling in each of those two sessions. I mean, I think Atkins Corner was confusing for all the reasons that we talked about, and all the, you know, the whole process with the amendment. And really, I think the whole issue of the road, and the turnaround, and what's really going to happen there, I think there is, I think the complexity of issues there might warrant letting that get finished, and see what happens, and resolved with applewood and so on. I didn't feel this, I don't feel the same way about North Emers. I really feel that that is something that, I felt there was much more of a positive, proactive consensus, even with the people that spoke against it that night, that I felt that there was some momentum, and that it was close enough. I feel that this is an article that we should speak to and continue to think about putting forward in the fall, and that the lens and the focus, and where we might want to interact and speak to is this whole issue of student housing. I mean, I just, it's just the, it's the pink elephant in the room, and it's going to continue to be the pink elephant in the room, and no matter how many times we say that there isn't anything legally we can do to mandate whether students live in this housing or not, we can really make a very clear and positive case for it being better. I agree with you that it, you know, that we can't necessarily eliminate it completely, but it will just be so much better. I truly believe this, and I'm, you know, willing to kind of work on this a little bit and help further this. The other thing I wanted to speak to is the number of times the request for market study information came up, and maybe that's what you mean by, you know, looking at a full build-out, what that would look like. I think it would be useful to get some clarification, or at least to decide amongst ourselves, what, what is, what is it that request is. I mean, I, my sense is that the public is asking for, the request is, well, you know, are we really going to be generating extra dollars for the town? You know, is that, how is this zoning really going to help the economy? I'm not sure, you know, I'd like to get to the bottom of that. I don't know if there's somebody here that wants to speak to that or not right tonight, but I think we need to address that.
Ms. Kruger.
I agree really there with Ms. Kruger, so I think it's been a very difficult process. And what Mr. Rosnoy started with is the lack of trust. So, while we could do many of these things, I think it would have to repair our credibility, not because we've done anything wrong, and I'm actually a really good voting caucus board, and I respect every member and working.
O'Keefe, and I think, I'm going to try to bring this full circle a little bit, just in the sense that, going back to Ms. Kruger's original question, which was, should we really try to do this for the fall, or would it be better to wait for the spring? And I'm just going to make a couple of statements about that. We do have the two, we have the housing study coming up, and we have the North Emers roadway possible improvements study coming up, which is more data coming into the planning board about what the conditions will actually be on the ground. I think, if, I'd like to hear some more comments about whether the board thinks we should try to bring this right back in the fall, or whether we should wait until we have more information before attempting anything. Ms. Ford.
I just, just on the heels of what we do and what we don't do, what I'm hearing, what I think is important, is where the historic district effort is, is, what's happening with that in North Emers. I'm not, you know, I'm aware of what's happening in town, but it seems to me that we do need to be tracking that with whatever we're doing with putting this article forward as well, because we can't, we can't, through zoning, protect that church, but the historic district can. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, it's, as I understand it, historical district is very, a lot of the regulations under historical district are similar to what we're trying to do with the four-way zone. It's slightly different in the scope and in terms of what it does, but I agree with you. Mr. Tucker.
There are, those are sort of two parallel things. There are actually a number of things you can do in zoning, and you should, if you think they're appropriate, you should approach the historical commission to seek their input on this. And in fact, we, the zoning subcommittee, discussed some of those during the process leading up to the spring, but because of the immediacy of the need to address the major revisions, we didn't include those, because some ways it was introducing a whole new topic. Because we've gotten as far as we have, he said recklessly, with the amendments in their current form, I think you have room to consider more amendments of different kinds, or separate amendments that might, for instance, precede the village center amendments, whenever you decide to bring them back. There are, again, there are a couple of things you can do under zoning. You could ask the select board or the historical commission whether or not it would consider North Emers village or portions of that village for a historic district under state law, as opposed to a national historic registered district, which we already have there. The two can be complementary, they don't have to be duplicative, it's a matter of how it's done. So, there are ways to address that question. The question becomes, and this is partly why the zoning subcommittee has had the role it has had through the zoning forum process, what's the scope of what we're then looking at, in terms of the amount of work and change that would be required to get that done? And frankly, there are other, other kinds of changes we could look at as well, look at other group, other critical resources besides historic resources. Bye, thanks.
Ms. Jones.
I was surprised how the article changed from last fall to this spring, because I heard input that, neighbor input that I didn't see reflected in the changes, and I saw changes that neighbors didn't really ask for, that they didn't influence their decision to support it or not. And what I heard most was the scope and size of the project, not being testing. And I'm wondering if we could follow Mr. Rosnoy's idea of it being citizen-driven and stakeholder-driven. And I'm not sure this would work, but what if you gave us the month of June, and you let us have a stakeholder subcommittee who sat down together and let us propose to you what we all could live in, and maybe give us one of you who you like at this table? How do you, how do you, on the planning board, remember, just mediate, most of the zoning enough to say, "Well, that's not smart growth. That's not a practical idea, so I'm going to put that away," you know, just to mediate. But what if we had a month to see if we could get anywhere? Maybe we can't. Maybe I want something so different than what you want, we can't get in the middle. But I absolutely think that there's a compromise somewhere near what Valerie and Nolan and I talked about, that maybe, instead of them telling us what our neighborhoods are going to look like, maybe we can tell them what we want it to look like, and maybe they'll go for it, because this isn't working, and I don't want to beat my head for another year, this sucks. Can we have the month of June and have a stakeholder subcommittee with one person that you agree on, and see if we can get somewhere? Or should we drop it? Because I'm okay dropping it, too.
Are you dropping it?
Well, if it is, I don't want to hit my head against the wall for another five years. We're just going to have to do something under commercial, which I honestly don't think is good for the neighborhood. My mom won't live above a muffler shop, and that's my, that's my ideal demographic. Because a UMass alum, I must retire in North Emers, and if the first floor is self-storage or a pizza parlor, she's not going to live there, and it's going to be students.
It's impossible to do nicer things, we've talked about this. You don't have to.
A hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial, I think I'll get twenty thousand beautiful.
I would love that, yeah. This is where the we're not a monolithic group becomes the problem.
I know, because if we had Connie or somebody, I don't know.
She's like that.
Sorry. I don't know. I don't know. It's a crazy idea, but I, I have in my mind a much smaller area, but with density more like last fall as a compromise. Like, squish it in real tight, and just try a little area, instead of this whole big area. And, I mean, it almost passed last fall, and it was big, and maybe we can just make that smaller, but I don't know. I'd like to talk and see if we can get somewhere that nobody else is being able to.
As Mr. Rosnoy brought this issue up in the first place, I'm going to ask him if he's got anything to say about it.
Yeah, actually, I was trying to address your question, where do we go from here? And first of all, I like that idea. I think we ought to allow some time, if it takes longer than the month of June, that's fine. Allow some time to let the residents and the businesses in the neighborhood get together and let us know what they think. But what I was going to say was, answering your question, my recommendation, and I would advocate for actually expanding the scope of what we're doing and taking some time. I sort of sensed that, from your comments, Mr. Webber, that there are a couple of studies out there, like the roadway study and the demographic housing study, and that it would be good for us to have that data to proceed further. And then, I would say that we ought to expand the scope of what we're looking at, and if it takes getting the select board meeting with us, because they have jurisdiction over the roads, then do it that way. But, and I understand the separation that has occurred up till now, that Article 17 was a funding mechanism, and that's why it was separate, but I still think it would have been good to have some mention of potential roadway design in Article 25. And it's now time to start integrating those things, now that the funding has been approved, recognizing that there is going to be some consideration of what's going to happen with the roadways in North Emers, and that it should go hand in glove with whatever happens with zoning. So, that's, that's my recommendation, and I would advocate for that. That being the case, I don't think there's any way we would be coming back to town meeting in the fall with that, but I don't think that that's necessarily bad. I think if we come back to town meeting with a dynamic vision for all of North Emers, including zoning and the roads, that it's something that the town can get behind, as I think it was Ms. Kruger said, we need more than just sixty-six point six percent. We need a lot of people. We need the town to get behind in a positive way, whatever we propose.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. Especially, I'd just like to comment that I think that your, your vision of including citizens and business owners and the select board and the housing studies and all those, all these pieces that are trying to come together, I mean, this is what we're struggling with, and this is what we're charged with in terms of trying to implement the master plan, and to try and figure out how to make some of those goals happen. There's certainly, there's nothing that would ever prevent any citizens from talking to each other, or from talking to staff, and to trying to work through compromises, and to present ideas as compromises with respect to zoning. I fully support that. And, I mean, the, I guess, there's a dichotomy here, though, which, one, one idea, one end of it is to work on a small piece of it, and the other end of it is to expand the scope and try and incorporate more, and to create a larger vision for it. And those, I mean, that's, those two ends of the spectrum are, I mean, as a board, when we, when we try to provide some direction to the zoning subcommittee as to where they should go, we're going to give them schizophrenia if we send them in both directions at once. Mr. O'Keefe?
So, I'll say at the outset that I disagree entirely with Mr. Rosnoy's notion of sort of washing our hands of zoning and having it be driven solely by petition. I don't think that that's the right direction to be positioning the board in. Having said that, I agree completely with his comments about working with or respecting the ability of Ms. Jones or anybody else who wants to bring a petition article to us. Of course, any citizen has that right, and if Ms. Jones wants to work with one or more people, or members of the board, or whatever, if she can do a better job than we've done, I mean, we've tried twice to get this passed and failed, so I would look forward to great anticipation to seeing what the results of that process would be. Anyone can bring a petition up before the town meeting, any citizen of Emers can. So, certainly, that's to be supported and encouraged, but I wouldn't, I don't, but the part I don't agree with is the idea that we shouldn't also be working on zoning issues, because I do think that's an important part of the responsibility of this board. I also do think that, in terms of our involvement with these articles, my personal opinion is that to come back with these in the fall would be fighting the same battles again without having changed the underlying structure, really, for many of the reasons that Mr. Webber mentioned, in terms of the outstanding housing studies, the traffic study, just the cruise funding flow. People run those up as issues again and again, and they are not going to be resolved to any substantial degree by this fall, at least not in a way that informs the zoning. And so, I do think that there's a real sense that town meeting suffers from zoning fatigue. If we come back, every single town meeting session with major zoning articles that might be similar, might not be similar from what they've seen before, I think that people's eyes start to glaze over at some point, and that kind of feeds into the sense that the planning board is just trying to get something passed. I don't think that that's the right way to approach this. So, I would prefer that we spend some time on working through these issues in more detail. If we decide that we want to advance them, which I still do think is a good idea, we spend the time, we look at the housing study, which is going to come out this summer, the data that's in there, and we work towards, say, next spring as a target for coming back with a fully developed set of proposals. Or, you know, there's other avenues, and Ms. Jones is suggesting petition article. She works with the neighbors, and if she's got something ready in the fall, and that's wonderful, then more power to everybody participating in that process. But in terms of our, at the board level, I think that we need to kind of take a step back and take some time to work through some of the issues that have presented themselves this time.
I didn't mean that we bring petition or climate, that we come up with a concept that we all could live with, that would likely pass if we all got people behind it, and bring it to you, your consideration.
I'm sorry, that's not how I understood.
No, I'm sorry, I used that word.
So, that's another mechanism, so I'd be willing to consider that.
Was there, I want to just take a second. Was there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on this and get a chance? I saw a hand up in the bag.
I had a question a long time ago, it's not really relevant anymore.
Let's hear from the gentleman in blue first, please.
My name is Ben Corper, and I own Trovis. My comment to this whole process is, I've been very disappointed for years and years in the lack of infrastructure investment, you know, in the last year. And I really feel that it's almost more important, so, and, you know, the discussion seems to be heading in that direction at this point. But the town has really just not made much of an investment there for a very long time, and needs to get focused on that. And I like, Mr. Russell?
Russell.
Yeah. I like your suggestion of trying to couple these issues together. I think that there really are two issues that do go together, and there needs to be a way to find a way to put them together.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kruger.
Thanks, Matt. I've been thinking more of, kind of incrementally, rather than more globally. So, entwining this, the more comprehensive vision that you, you know, Mr. Rosnoy, and finally think of ways to do parts of this that then can fit together, so that more climate. So, the more comprehensive, I think, is almost like a master plan of an area, where we know kind of generally where we're going, but maybe we start with the triangle piece, or we start, and not, and still reveal that there's a bigger vision, but start with pieces in both Atkins Corner and North Amherst, where there is something to build on. I think as planners, we're always sort of in big plans and then comprehensively, which I think certainly makes sense. But, in terms of building a foundation for some reason, I'm, I'm wanting to think smaller. And while I'm inclined to wanna take more time, what I think I heard Ms. Jones say is, if something could be worked out in June, this board could decide its timing for the fall, maybe at our, our first meeting in July, which we can see if something could incubate that could maybe be that foundation piece. And I don't think we can absolutely decide right now, but it's our major, it's our initiative, and it's similar to what we've done before, trying to get ready for October.
Mr. Schreger?
So, my inclination is to press on, you know, to, you know, I love this idea that was, you know, really, you know, initiated you, that really articulated my, my sense about, you know, getting some more excitement about this, because I actually think that there is a lot of excitement in this. And it's gone through, you know, a little bit of a town meeting, but sixty-two percent of the people were, you know, in favor of, in favor... Pardon me?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five percent of the, I'm sorry, sixty-two are in favor of Atkins Corner. So, so, and people, the, the remaining thirty, whatever, the remaining thirty-five percent are against it for very different reasons. Some are, you know, as we've just heard tonight. And I think that those very different re, those, so there's very different reasons that, that remaining thirty-five percent are against this. And I think that, you know, many of those are addressable. Many of those were simply a lack of information. Many of those were, you know, not feeling part of the process, which there's this great offer tonight. And I, I think that the iron's hot, you know, I think that, you know, people are very interested in this. And, you know, the, the membership of town meeting will be pretty much the same as it was for this vote, so we can, you know, look through and see, you know, look at the transcripts of town meeting and see, you know, what people said, and try to deal with those almost on a personal basis. But I think it's a very important, I think it's a, you know, really, kind of critical importance, and I would hate to, you know, see us leave this by the wayside. So, regarding the housing study, I, I mean, I really, there's been so much talk about the housing study. The housing study's not designed to, for this particular zoning article, it's a town one. And quite frankly, I think that the impact on our thoughts about the zoning, this particular zoning, will be minimal. Clearly, the, you know, some of the landlords in there have already thought about, you know, what kinds of housing. And so, this particular housing study simply won't have the kind of data that will be a game changer for this particular housing center.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, a country I've heard from. I was listening to fellow residents who live in North Amherst, I live in South Amherst, but I do business in North Amherst. And I was putting myself in your place, and I think one of you used the word revitalization a while ago. And, and if I, if I was a North Amherst resident and I went to the charrette, which I did not attend, but, and then listened to Form B zoning, maybe the expectation is that Form B zoning for the North, North Amherst is going to help, was going to help revitalize the area, when in fact, it's just, it's just the zoning changes, instead of, you know, what do we do with some of the historic buildings? How do we mitigate traffic issues? How do we manage student housing better, or rental housing, I'd like to say, because it could be any one. And, so I think it's a revitalization issue in addition to what we're looking at as a planning board of zoning. And I don't know what the answer to that is, because I don't know who's in charge of revitalization in terms. But we could have an ad hoc committee, I'm sure. And, but I'm not volunteering. So, it's, it's just, it's just an observation. And the other thing is, the, you talked about some of the reports that will be forthcoming. Mr. Rosnoy and I are on the transportation plan task force. I might not have all the words in the right order. And that also has a report coming out, possibly, depending, a little more after Friday. And, and that, but that's not due till January, if I'm not mistaken. Is that our timeline, I believe?
Yeah, and that's likely to get.
And that would be, that would be the best case, which we, and any information gleaned from that, which is what that is. And that's a task force that we're on, that was the, and by charge of the town manager, I believe, to take the piece of the master plan on parking and transportation and hire consultants to help us implement it, just what we're struggling to do right now with sort of revitalization issues or other master plan issues, is that, as laypeople, it's very hard to implement those things. You can talk about them, you can go to charrettes and do whatever, but, so, but anyway, that, that committee will meet on Friday. So, that was just my observation. And, and my third point, final point was, at the beginning of it, and it's sort of like, I listen to everybody, and I'm just like, oh, ooh, no, I like that. And I'm an extrovert thinker, which is a scary thing for people, because I think out loud, outside, kind of like that peanut character, and I know that. But my history as an administrator would be to keep the energy of the zoning. Not, I, I would respectfully disagree that we're killing them with zoning at town meeting. I think we ought to look at one or both articles again in time for the fall town meeting. That's, I mean, we're talking, what, October, November, with a, with a warrant deadline, probably, I don't know, I forget all that stuff. But it's tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow, probably. But, just not to give up, if, not to, I mean, there are two schools of thought. One is we can say, well, jeez, we really need to go back to the drawing board and look at things that we need to do. And therefore, we'll come back in, in a year, a year from now, we'll have more information. Or, the other thing is, we have just a few fixes to make, to, that we're very close. Let's keep it going, let's get, let's try to move forward on one or both articles. And my personal feeling, I live a little closer to Atkins, is that that, even though the vote wasn't the same, I think that the stumbling points for the Atkins Corners is, are a lot less than North Amherst, which is much more complicated, I believe. So, my, my personal feeling would be that if, if, if we could take one back for fall town meeting, it would be the Atkins Corner, with some of the other stuff we've heard tonight, you know, talking, more residents, talking to the Applewood residents, and the Bunners and so forth.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. There was a question in back that I didn't get to yet.
I just wanted to, being in my role of nag, and say, to remind everyone that although it sounds like a really good idea to talk about this outside of the public meeting, anyone who has approached to talk about it outside of the public meeting probably shouldn't do that. And probably should let Ms. Jones and the neighbors meet on their own and come up with something. And if they wanted to, you know, get input from staff, factual input, or zoning input, or whatever, that would be fine. But for you to do that might compromise the open meeting a lot.
And if I can add to that, just if, if the, if there are citizens who do have ideas about those things, to please call staff and ask that they be put on, on the agenda, so that we can hear you as things come up. And we're happy to do that. Uh, yes, in back, please.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things about the information people are seeking. Two really critical pieces, as I see it, are as appropriate, build-out scenarios and the related fiscal impact studies. I believe you mentioned that people were wanting to see what, what the impact would be on town revenues, how it nets out. And I'm, I'm well aware that you can't nail down an exact, but you can take scenarios and you can run them. If this, then that, then that. And that's what we're looking for, and I, please, 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 before we go forward, let's have that information. Second, floodplain delineation and mapping. The funds have been, are there, they're critically important. And this, there's a lot of rivers and streams and wetlands and floodplains in that area, not to mention the aqua lips. Please get that mapped out and get those maps updated, it's critically important information.
Thank you, Ms. Corbin. I'm not sure if there's anything more to say tonight. I think it would be premature at this point for the board to make a decision about this. Having had the discussion, I propose, I would propose that we now proceed with the customary sequence of events, with being the zoning forum, followed by a, the zoning subcommittee, you know, sort of discussing with the rest of us what, what they think they're capable of doing or want to do. And we'll all have a chance to mull this over and come back around to it. Is there anyone who wants to wrap up with anything before we move on to another? I guess we only have a couple things left on the agenda, so it's, I'm happy to hear from anyone. Mr. Arkeet?
So, I would just second your approach that you just proposed. And I guess I would request that we have an agenda item for our next, or maybe our, whatever planning board meeting would be occurring toward the end of June to have another discussion, probably not as lengthy as this one, hopefully, but just for us to give you feedback on the zoning forum and to maybe come to a more firm and defined action plan.
Thank you, Mr. Arkeet. Ms. Breschek, can we put something on the agenda for that time? Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for the, to the fellow for coming in, and thanks to all the planning board and to the staff for, for kicking in tonight. I think this has been a really productive discussion, so, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Want to give a subcommittee report? Mr. Rosnoy?
We can, we can update the, what's the name of the transportation plan task force? We have a, a meeting on Friday to discuss receipt of proposals. And I'll have more information for, for the planning board after we do that. But the deadline has passed, and apparently, we've received at least one.
Excellent. Ms. Anderson?
Community Preservation Act Committee, Article twenty-one passing, so I think a very good package, and I think it's gonna take care of a lot of CPAC-type issues on town. I've heard it was, had a minimal discussion, or was pretty strongly approved. And I'm, I'm very happy to be on that committee. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great committee, because it has a beginning, a middle, and an end.
Those are a good kind of committee. I sat in the Puffers Pond Twenty Twenty Committee, which also had a beginning, a middle, and an end. Thank you, and we'll look forward to hearing from you, probably about what you do at the MFP. Ms. Ford?
I will just say that I do attend the beginning of the Design Review Board meeting last Tuesday, and was able to participate in the review of, if you could help me.
Seventy-nine South Pleasant Street.
Seventy-nine South Pleasant Street, which is where the Fiber Arts Center used to be. And it, and it used to be a church, I don't know what many of you, yeah, but they're doing, so Amherst College has bought it, and it's, it'll become a combination of faculty, department, offices, and I think it's gonna be lovely. And they're basically restoring a whole front of it to really take on the character and proportions of what the church used to be. So, beautiful landscaping in the front, and so it's, I, and it will be coming before the board is gonna take a review, so you'll all get a chance to see it.
Thank you so much.
Can I just say, with those eyeglasses, I think we have the right person on the design.
Everybody loves these glasses.
Definitely, definitely the right person, I think.
Uh, Mr. Arkeet? I don't wanna bore you all with further discussion of zoning, the zoning subcommittee, but I do have an announcement to make, which is that I will be stepping down from the zoning subcommittee on June thirtieth. I've served on the subcommittee for essentially all of the five years that I've been on the board, and that's involved a tremendous amount of work. And I think I need to take a break from it. I'll enjoy serving my last year on the planning board without having to spend two hours before every planning board meeting dealing with zoning issues. But having said that, I'll just reiterate my earlier comments about being, feeling very energized by the board's approach to zoning this spring. And I'm, I think that the best way for me to encourage and grow that is participating as a board member in working on zoning issues from outside the zoning subcommittee. And so, I'm very happy to open up that seat. You know, I've been on the subcommittee longer than everyone else has been on this board, and so, I've deprived you all of an opportunity to enjoy all these zoning issues. So, I'm just giving you all a heads up that, that that will be opening up. And I'm sure we have one or more people here who will be able to carry on that work, I believe.
Well, thank you for your service, Mr. Arkeet, you'll be missed. We will look forward to having you more alert and present at our meetings, having been worn down beforehand. You know, I have to say, just, and I'm not sure what to, where to, where to go with this, but that I think that it's been very useful to have the whole board involved in addressing these zoning articles as they come up. And I'd like to see a shift in the response, the amount of responsibility that the zoning subcommittee is taking on, and I'd like to see that spread along, and brought, you know, the, the board itself spending some time regularly addressing this, instead of letting it go on in the background. Continue to try to bring it up. It worked very well, I think, in the spring, and I'd like to just continue that.
Is one possible structure, I'm sorry?
Please, Mr. Schreger.
Is one possible structure to make the committee of the whole, you know, it's basically just.
Disband the zoning subcommittee?
Didn't disband it, and basically make the committee of the whole zoning committee?
Well, you, you, you know, you're reading my mind.
Okay. So, is that what you were saying?
More or less, I think. I'm not saying that that's definitely the way to go, and I wouldn't wanna, you know, with, without Mr. Carson here, I think it's not fair to make any kind of decision about it, him being the third member of the, of the zoning subcommittee. And you also haven't heard from Mr. Crowder about whether he would like to, what he would like to do.
I, I think it would be great to have everyone on the zoning subcommittee. But zoning subcommittee needs for two hours, focused only on zoning, and that's not enough time. So, so it would be difficult, I think, to incorporate into a planning board meeting, with that to be a second meeting or a longer meeting.
So, something to think about.
How often does it?
So, yeah, just a word on structure, since we do have a bunch of people who have never served on it, with the exception of Mr. Rosnoy, who put in his time several years ago. So, we're a three-member group, historically, we've been three macros. Although Mr. Rosnoy served alongside Mr. Crowder, Mr. Carson, and I for a period during which we have four, I think we've also had two from time to time, so it's not a fixed composition. But three has been the most common number. And our normal practice is to have a meeting at five PM, essentially before every planning board meeting. That, that, that goes on usually until two minutes before the planning board meeting stops, and we can't survive without coffee anymore, and we need to rush out and get something to bring to the planning board meeting during sort of zoning season, which is about ten months in a year, or often being more frequently than that.
You get licensed for that?
You're a great salesman.
Yeah. So, I guess, the, the reason I point that out is, is sort of reinforcing Mr. Crowder's comments that unless... that unless all of us are willing to make a substantially larger time commitment, I'm not sure that we could adequately work through the issues in terms of having everybody collectively meet and hash out zoning issues.
Well, you would know better than me.
Well...
Yes, Ms. Ford?
I would be interested in hearing, not, you know, having a synopsis of how these issues, you know, whether it's, it's kind of a general across the board discussion in each meeting and whether you're tackling sections that, that could technically be handled by different people at different times. And so we could actually divvy it up that way and two people could meet two hours once a month and come and report to the larger group if you think that that might be feasible or might work. You'd think about different structures for how this...
I think that especially bears, bears thinking about giving, given the fact that we've had so many comments about the process, that, you know, there's no, you know, there's no reason not to think outside of the box a little bit and see if we can't figure out how to make our zoning articles more responsive to the real pressures of, of, of town meeting and making sure that the public feels, feels hurting. I'm not by any means saying that the zoning subcommittee has done a bad job of that, not by any means. You've been, you know, angelic with your patience and no one doubts that, so. But I'm just trying to kind of think, I think maybe, at this point, maybe we should put it on as an agenda item. Maybe, if, I think that maybe our next meeting is taken up by site plan reviews, if I'm not mistaken.
The next meeting, you have two site plan reviews, both of which, well, one of which is a big one, it's the seventy-nine South Pleasant. The other one is a small one, but that doesn't mean that we take a lot of time. And then you have a couple of other things coming up. Market Hill Road, there's going to be an E and R. And I think you wanted to talk about whether you were going to have a zoning forum and whether that was going to occur on the 20th of June. So that was something that the planning board was going to be participating in that discussion, I understood, not just the zoning subcommittee. Is that correct?
I, I guess I wasn't aware that we had it positioned as a planning board discussion topic, but I could be mistaken in that.
I wasn't either, but I may have forgotten, you know, the hubbub.
All right. Well, there was some reason I put it on.
Well, I'll tell you what, we already have planning board subcommittee report zoning on the agenda every week. And so what I'm going to do is just say, this is when we get to the planning board subcommittee reported for the zoning subcommittee, there's going to be more scope to it than, it's, it's going to be more of a two-way street in terms of what we're talking about. And, and as I said, I don't want to go too much further with this without Mr. Carson. I propose we don't necessarily need to schedule it.
Sure.
Yes?
I just wanted to mention on the scheduling issue that you mentioned, Ms. Brestrop, my feeling is that we should go ahead and schedule that now rather than having it be a discussion topic at the next planning board meeting, unless anybody has any objection to it. Normally, that's something that would happen at the subcommittee level or even administratively. But I think the 20th is the date that you cited. That's kind of been the, the date that we've been targeting all along, so I would rather have that scheduled sooner than later so that people have advanced notice of it.
Okay. That's June 20th. We have meetings coming up on June 6th at 7:00 PM and June 20th at 7:00 PM. Is there anything else for tonight? Ms. Krueger, yes?
A couple meetings ago, we said we wanted to start talking about housing issues and student housing issues. I know we have the SMART study out there, but people seem to have some energy for figuring out a certain pathway, probably might go about talking about housing or student housing, the whole, the whole gamut. Said we do it in the summer, we got through town meetings, so I just want to renew that because the summer is going to be short. I don't know when we want to have that discussion, but I'd be tempted at least to decide how we can create this.
Comments?
Just, Ms. Ford, I think it's an important discussion. I'd be interested in hearing what you feel is the focused intent for the planning board. Is it for the purpose of having a position? Is it, is it to affect policy in some way? What, what are you thinking about in terms of why it's important for us as a group to be doing this discussion?
Well, I think it relates to, is it okay to respond?
Yes, please, discuss it on yourself.
Sort of, it seems to come up so much in the other work that we're doing, you know, I just thought by kind of immersing ourselves a little bit more in that, we could be responsive in terms of, but also maybe think of ways to help create some conversations across some of the other boards or institutions that we could help create under and out of conversations around some partnerships or solutions that I know that's a point of interest, that's related enough to planning issues. I, I brought something, I was trying to find something, I found, filed that I thought was lost, about a conference that was a countdown, wasn't all housing, but had a lot to do with it. It was like 1996. And sort of getting that, the prime community spearheaded something across the academic institutions and sectors of the community and explore that.
If only we had people who were connected to the universities.
Massachusetts Agriculture College.
So that may not be a focus enough?
No, I just, I, I think it's useful to draw all kind of coming around this with a kind of purpose. I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Where does the housing go? Who's it for and who participates in that? And how can some create partnerships, get it formed? Or is it just about the mass building, you know, building more housing or is it some other alternative? What's our role in our conversation?
Ms. Brestrop?
May I say something, a correction to what I said before?
Of course.
Which is that on June 6th, you actually have 67 North Hampton Road, which was the hearing that you didn't have last week. I'm sorry that I made that mistake. And seventy-nine South Pleasant will be held on the 20th of June.
Okay. Thank you. And then we'll segue nicely into my next topic that we absolutely have to discuss before we go anywhere, which is the rest of summer scheduling. July, the available Wednesdays are the 4th, the 11th, the 18th, and the 25th. I don't think any of us wants to come in here on July 4th, although we could have some fireworks. Might be a good day for zoning forum. So for July, I would propose that we, given that we potentially have a lot of these Amherst College applications still coming up, still things coming in, that we try to figure out in advance which two Wednesdays in July we'd like to meet, as the first one is not an option. The 18th would be the standard second meeting, but we could also shift them around and do the 4th and the 25th. I want to try and come back to this next, you know, two weeks when we do that, I assume. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to make the comment that the planning board has the townroom on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. If you shift the time, you might end up in this room or over in the bank center. So the date of the 18th has been reserved up in the townroom, just to let you know that.
Understood. And that's why we're in this room today, because we took the, the alternate week.
That's right.
And then for August, we have, there are five Wednesdays in August. The normal dates would be the first and the 15th. Because of travel schedules and so forth, I think if we can try and just all check our schedules before the next meeting.
I can tell you right now, I'm not available for either of those dates in August.
Okay?
I'm not available on the 35th or July.
Can we do that as, can we all do a check-in or email to Chris so that we have a grid of, say, news? How about we just have, of all the dates, of all the Wednesdays in June, July, and August?
What's your available?
Except for June. June, we're all set.
Yep. Yeah, June is Saturday scheduled, 16th, 20th. That's a great idea.
And it's an excusing July 4th. So the 11th, 18th, and 25th, and then 1/8, 15, 22, and 29. Everybody just pick their availability and we just see where it will fall. Because it's summer, it's vacation, we have, we won't have perfect...
We won't have everybody. Okay, that's a great idea.
Is that all right with you, Chris?
And if we have to meet in another room, so be it. Okay. Okay, thank you for your patience with that. Anything else from Mr. Arke?
I will, for sure.
All in favor, please pack up and go. Thanks, Ms. Anderson.
All right. I already told you about Pioneer Valley Pizza and Frittell's Restaurant that's going to be building a little building next to 30 Boltwood. I think I told you about that last time, did I?
Don't worry.
So Pioneer Valley Pizza, which currently has a place near Michael's Billiards on Beltratown Road, wants to move into town. Also, they've bought a condominium unit in 30 Boltwood, which is the Enos Cook House, although we think of it as the Webster House. It's the one that used to be Crutie's Restaurant, Homely's. And they want to build a little addition right next to Johnny's Tavern.
Twister's Tavern, it used to be.
This is going to be scrutinized by the historical commission and the design review board, so you may not feel the necessity to scrutinize it.
What about the food police?
Or a...
The second one is Mission Cantina, which is just an interior renovation. They're going to expand into a former liquor store that's next door to their restaurant, which is a...
It's a good place, yeah.
People work there close. Third one is Marcy Lowery, who wants to open a veterinary practice on, at 660 West Street, which is 116.
Six sixty. Yeah, that's your, well, that's near Mission Cantina. Because 600 West Street is the...
Six sixty West Street, I think, is the Kimmel Hassens.
Yes, right. As I said, it's got to be past our owners.
Kimmel Hassens. They want to take a piece of that, have a veterinary establishment there. And the last thing is a two-family house at the corner of West Street and Cotwine Lane.
West Street.
It's a place to be.
Common of my good.
Any interest in any of those? Because you're the most...
Okay.
Any of the two?
Well, I'm interested, but I don't think we need to bring them.
Thank you.
Thank you.